Good practice run.
Good practice run.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting July 14th, 2021. Due to the fact that we have vice chair and chair elections tonight, as the secretary of the Planning Commission, I will be running the meeting up into that time. And once we have established and confirmed the chair and vice chair through elections at that time, I'll turn it over to the chair, chairman or chairperson to continue the meeting for the rest of the evening. So now I'll call the order to meeting, to call it meeting to order. And it seems that we have a quorum established. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2021, June 2nd, 2021, and June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meetings. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is staff reports and other business. And before I move on to the actual item, I'd like to introduce a new planner that has been with the Planning Commission, Planning Department for two or three weeks, Mr. Joel Aguilera. He comes to us from Fort Wayne, Indiana. Ball State University is his school.
Commission, it's so nice to meet all of you. I've met a few of you and I'm so grateful to finally have a face to everybody and be able to introduce myself. My name is Joe Aguilera and I come, of course, from Indiana, the Hoosier State. And I'm really glad to be here. I'm really glad to be able to introduce myself. I've really fallen in love with Murfreesboro. I tell staff and everybody else, I always go to the parks. I've been to Barfield like my first week. And so Barfield was a really great park. I went down and seen everything around here. And it's been beautiful. I love it. I love the staff. Everybody's been treating me kindly with respect and encouraging me to be more and to do more. And just been a great, it's been a great work environment. I'm really grateful to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks, Joel. Doing an excellent job already and been a great addition to our team. The next item is election of chair and vice chair for the 2020 and 2021 business year. I will open up the floor for nominations. We'll do the chair first. And after that, we'll vote on the chair and then we'll do vice chair.
Make a motion. We elect Kathy Jones as chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Halliburton?
Aye.
Commissioner LaLance?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion for vice chair and we will follow the same procedure.
Make a motion. We nominate Ken Halliburton for the vice chair?
Second.
Well, the motion has been properly seconded. Ms. Jacob, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Halliburton?
I don't know that I need to vote for myself.
I'm sorry. You're right.
Insane.
Insane.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner LaLance?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good deal. So the chairperson for Planning Commission for the 2021 year will be Madam Chair, Kathy Jones. Vice chair will be Ken Halliburton. And congratulations. And I will now turn it over to the chairperson to continue to conduct the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it, Mr. McKnight.
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Ives, for the record, just to make sure we did that, well, it would be for the 2021 and 22 calendar year rather than on the agenda, the 2020 and 2021. Is that right? Were we?
Last year was such a bummer. I thought maybe we should do it over there.
Mr. LaLance, that was a typo. And so you are correct.
All right, good deal.
Thank you. Honored very much to serve in this chair again. Appreciate it. And honored to serve with each of you. So thank you. Our next item under staff reports and other business is the discussion of the Murfreesboro Plan Commission rules and procedures. And, oh, Mr. Blomley, you're going to take this for us, okay?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. A few meetings ago, Mr. LaLance brought up the question of whether or not it was, it was necessary to read the consent agenda at our meetings, particularly at our day meetings when we have a very lengthy consent agenda. So we pored over the Planning Commission rules and proceed, rules of procedure and determined that there was nothing in the rules of procedure that require the Planning Commission to read the consent agenda. So our recommendation would be that since the rules of procedure are silent on that, that we leave it silent. And that way, it's at the Planning Commission's discretion of whether or not to read it or not read it. And it's not codified within the rules of procedure. And then if, from this point forward, as a general unwritten rule, if you would like to, to not read the consent agenda unless a Planning Commission member calls for it to be read at a specific meeting, I think that would be appropriate. And I also wanted to use this opportunity to mention that our legal department, Mr. Ives and Mr. Hankins, are working on some housekeeping measures to our rules of procedure that we hope to bring back to you. So some unrelated housekeeping measures that we hope to bring back to you in the next meeting or two for discussion. So wanted to brief you on what we found out after the discussion on the consent agenda reading the other week. I don't think there's any, any need for any, for any action. But if the Planning Commission wishes, then at our day meeting next Wednesday, we can just, I think you could probably preface it by saying you have the consent agenda before you. If any Planning Commissioner wishes for it to be read aloud, we can do so. If not, we'll take a motion with it as written on the, on the agenda.
Thank you for asking the question. Saved my voice. I appreciate it so much.
Saved seven minutes.
And seven whole minutes?
Think about this, seven minutes for like eternity of the Planning Commission. I mean, how many hours?
Yeah, a lot.
You'd have been on time a couple meetings. No, actually, I would have been seven minutes later.
Yes, yes.
And I've just been reminded that, that when you preface your, the consent agenda, you would need to call if any items need to be removed. But that, that is, of course, included in the rules of procedure. And so that would just be continuing what we're doing right now.
Okay, wonderful. Appreciate that very much. Thank you all for taking the time to look into it. So item C is consideration of revisions to the 2021 Planning Commission calendar. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That will be me as well. And a couple of things that, that we noticed. The submittal deadline for November was inadvertently scheduled for November, the 11th, which is Veterans Day and is a, is a federal holiday and is a holiday at City Hall. We will not be there to intake plans. And so that's, that's revision number one, that we would request that you revise or amend the calendar to shift that from Thursday, November, the 11th to Wednesday, November, the 10th. And that's for our monthly submittal deadline. The other change is with respect to our night meeting in October. Our night meeting in October is scheduled for October, the 6th. October, the 6th is a Wednesday, as always. It's the first Wednesday of the month. That week is fall break week for schools. And when we, when we bring the calendar to you each year, it's generally, the fall break is generally not available for the following year. And so we don't know when that's going to be. But as a rule of thumb, scheduling public hearings for the week of spring break and the week of fall break is not a good idea because there could be absences from members of the Planning Commission, absences from members of staff who are, who have obligations with their families due to lack of childcare, for example. I could be one of those people that week. And then also members of the public who are traveling. It's not, it's not great to schedule public hearings during times when we know when a large portion of our population is going to be traveling. As we want, you know, the, the maximum amount of participation as we, as we can get. So we would recommend that you amend the calendar also to reschedule that night meeting from October, the 6th to the following Wednesday, October, the 13th. So it would be as, as practical as possible for everybody.
Okay, so you would like a motion on that for the, those two changes to our calendar?
Is one motion sufficient for both items?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We probably need a reminder or two on that October 6th.
You know I'm good for some reminders.
Yes, sir. We'll see if I remember by the end of the meeting. I need to do that. All right, moving on to our public hearings for tonight. Our first public hearing will be a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of the right-of-way of Berry Place. The Murfreesboro Housing Authority is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This particular item, you'll notice actually items 5A, B, and C are all mandatory referrals from the housing authority, which we have actually noticed as three separate public hearings, as they are three separate right-of-ways. But I'm going to do one staff report and would ask that we do the public hearings and then take three separate actions. So you may recall the locations of these three rights-of-way are generally shown on the draft master plan. Essex Court is off of South Hancock Street and Mercury. Berry Place is currently between First Avenue and Bilbro and is split by Bilbro for the cul-de-sac portion and the continuous portion and Burns Court. So looking at those a little bit closer in the existing portion is the housing authority's duplex units are served by those particular streets. So Berry Place, you can see in this particular aerial drawing. For Burns Court, you see the duplex units surrounding the court. And then lastly, Essex Court is again surrounded by those duplex units. This has been noticed as a public hearing in the newspaper and all of the property owners adjacent to these right-of-way abandonments have been notified, which in this case is all the housing authority. So we have not had any comments on that. But with that, we would ask that you open the public hearing. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Ms. Smith, if you, if you don't mind reading the conditions of, recommended conditions of approval into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I'm, I'm still new to this mandatory referral. So we do have a couple of conditions of approval that we've included in the text. And all of the conditions are actually subject to all of the right-of-way areas. So first, that a temporary public easement, utility and drainage easement in all the abandonment areas shall be dedicated concurrently with the recording of a quick claim deed, subject to the final approval of a legal instrument by our city legal department. Two, that the applicant shall prepare and submit legal descriptions and exhibits necessary for the city legal department to draft those necessary legal instruments. Three, that a quick claim deed transferring the subject right-of-way be executed and recorded. And those recording, and the recording fees will be the responsibility of the applicant. And lastly, once final utility locations are determined with the final redesign of the Mercury Park master plan area, new public, permanent public utility easements shall be dedicated in the proper locations to meet the needs of the various utility companies with any obsolete easements being extinguished concurrently. Approval of this request includes approval of any future easement, abandonments, and dedications as determined necessary by staff. So with that, we would recommend that those conditions go with the approval recommendation to council.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Smith before we open the public hearings? Okay. Not sure it's necessary, but just in case, we are going to open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. And if you come to the podium, please state your name and address. And you may address the Planning Commission with any of your concerns, comments. And you, please limit any concerns and comments to three minutes. So with that, we will open the first public hearing for the mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment regarding Berry Place. If anybody would like to speak, please come forward. Okay, we will close the public hearing. And do we have a questions, comments, and/or a motion from the Planning Commission?
No questions. I'll make a motion. Will you approve the mandatory referral for Berry Place?
Second.
And subject to?
Yes, all staff comments.
Staff comments. Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will also have a public hearing for the mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment regarding Burns Court. So we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, and/or motion.
There are no move for approval on item B, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And for item C, the mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment regarding Essex Court. We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So move with all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item D, we have a zoning application for approximately 5.4 acres located along Bridge Avenue and New Salem Highway to be rezoned from RS 10 to PND, the Transit Center, PND. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Well, just a short introduction. A couple of weeks ago, at our last Planning Commission session, you went ahead and set this evening's for a public hearing for the Transit Center project for a rezone from RS 10 to a PND Transit Center planned institutional district. And the location of that is at the New Salem Highway and Bridge Avenue. And I will be turning it over to the applicant, Mr. Matt Taylor, to go over their PowerPoint and their video presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Matt Taylor of SEC. You've also got Mr. Brandon Harvey over my left shoulder here from HDR. He's the architect on the project, as well as Mr. Jim Kerr from the city, the applicant on the project. So as Ms. Smith said, we have, here tonight to present a request to rezone to a PND to allow the new home and permanent home of the Murfreesboro Transit Center. It is by a 5.4 acre site located at the southwest quadrant of Bridge Avenue at 99. Today, it's about a, about a third of it's in grass and the rest is in mainly deciduous trees, as you can see here. It is zoned RS 10 today. That has been zoned that way for quite some time, though I do believe it's pretty evident in the field that it's a, very much a transitional area. You've got industrial to the south. You've got the RM 16 to the west or east that actually houses the city's public safety training facility. Got some commercial highway at the corner. So we think, given this location with good access to Highway 99, I-24, Highway 96, it is an ideal location for this use. The site has an abundance of suitable utilities. We've got water along both streets, Highway 99 and Bridge Avenue. We've got sewer along both streets, although we will only be utilizing the sewer along Bridge Avenue. And then we've got storm that comes under Highway 99 that we will convey through our property. And then we've got gas along Highway 99 as well. This is kind of in the center of the project, looking south. Believe that's the Comcast building through the trees. This is looking on, from Highway 99 on to the property. So you see our neighboring church to the right and then our property in the trees in the background. This is standing in the front of the property on 99, looking back toward I-24. You can see the Public Safety Training Tower to the left of this picture. This would be looking back toward Highway 96 to the north. And so the property is going to be to the left in this picture. This is along Bridge Avenue, looking toward the west. Again, the property would be to the left. And this would be looking back toward Highway 99, along Bridge Avenue, the property would be to the right. So the site plan itself, all of our uses are spread across three buildings. The closest building to Highway 99 would be the administration building. This is where the, most of the employees would be during the day. There'd be training facilities inside of there, break rooms, place for the drivers to come in. And then the transit director and I think assistant director. The public parking along Highway 99, and that would also be employee parking. And so really, that would be where those passenger cars would be isolated to, is that parking lot. Whereas buses would enter off of Bridge Avenue, for the most part. Some of those buses may enter off of New Salem. But the normal passenger cars would not be allowed in the center of the project. The other building in the center of the project is the Transit Building itself. This is where people are going to buy and redeem tickets. This is where they would load and unload off of buses. So this will be where most of the public would be. And then the third building in the lower right-hand corner, or lower left-hand corner of this diagram, is the bus maintenance facility. This would be where routine maintenance, maybe tires get changed, oil change. And at some point, this will likely house a bus wash facility. It may upon initial construction. That depends on budget. And so the, everything on site, except for the public parking along Highway 99, would be fenced. We'd have two gates, one at each access point. Those would be operated off of a Yelp mode. We do have a couple of different types of fencing for the project. And those are outlined inside the zoning book. Some of those are decorative in nature. Some of those are more of an anti-climb chain link fence. And then some are a solid fence, depending on the proximity to our neighbors. Just like every other site, we will comply with the city's zoning ordinance for lighting, so that we don't have light spill over onto our neighbors. We'll restrict lighting values as well as heights of the poles. And then we will have a entry sign on our entrance onto Highway 99, identifying the site. Access plan, Highway 99, I'm sure each of you know, will be widened to a five-lane curb and gutter section. I believe T-Dot plans to start that pretty much on the heels of the existing project wrapping up out there. That will also be a future bikeway or bike route, according to the city's master plan for greenways, blueways, and bikeways. And so we've tried to make accommodations on our site plan to promote that bike usage through access off of 99, as well as bike racks at the front of the administration building. The city's major thoroughfare or major transportation plan also calls for realignment of Malloy Lane directly to the west of this site. So you see it here in a solid yellow line. And then, of course, Bridge Avenue was reconstructed and widened, I think about 15 years ago now, maybe 16. So we do have an access point planned on each street. The one off of Bridge Avenue will be for the buses. You'll notice that's a little unique. We've reversed the inflow and outflow there, so that the outflow is on the left and the in is on the right. And that is purely because of how the buses have to flow around this internal island to load and unload passengers. All that has to be on the driver's side. And so you need that reverse, that clockwise motion around that center island. And then the entrance off of 99 would be for primarily employees and public to access that front lot. Both of our gates, as I said earlier, would be operating a Yelp mode to comply with the Murfreesboro Fire Department. Buffering plan will have extensive landscaping around the entire property. Will comply with the city's landscape ordinance. We've got, in the yellow, we've got the city's type D landscape buffer, where we abut the existing church, as well as other existing residential properties. And then on the south, the orange would be a lighter buffer, where we butt up against the existing industrial zoning there. And then the pink stripes would be our more typical 10-foot wide perimeter planning. So you'd have shrubs and shade trees, more of an aesthetic treatment there rather than a screening. Architecture, we've tried to build a very consistent building material throughout the campus. We've tried to utilize very durable materials. This will be a long-term facility since it's a public building. We see this being a 50, 60, 70-year building. And so we need that, those materials to stand up to the test of time. All of our buildings have a, you know, a theme, from materials to roofline simplicity, trying to create a low-maintenance facility and campus overall. So all of our buildings are single stories. You'll, this is looking from that front public parking lot. This would be the administration building. So you'll see a lot of interest in the roofline, a lot of interest in this front tower feature. This is the 2D version of that. You'll see a lot of glass in that tower feature, about three different colors of brick, some stone banding. And then as you get up toward the top, we introduce an architectural metal panel. And then the top picture here is the south or the left side of the building. I think that this, this elevation reminds me of the new airport terminal, the way it looks a little bit there. And again, we carry those same materials around the sides. The center part of this will be, will house some mechanical equipment. So those will be fully screened by this portion of the building. And then the bottom picture is the north side. And so there's a little outdoor patio facility there. This is the transit station, which is in the center part of the development. This is where people will come. They'll hang out here until their bus arrives, or they're waiting for their next bus. This is where they'll redeem their tickets. Same consistent building materials, try to keep simple rooflines, brick, standing seam metal roof. This is the north and the south elevations, top and bottom respectively there. So same materials. And then really, this building is probably two smaller buildings with a common roofline. And so the, these two elevations are what's on the interior part, where you would, the top here is where you would redeem your tickets. And so I think the south is some storage type facilities where the public would not, well, actually, it's the restroom. So the public would be in there. And some sample elevations of the canopies themselves. And then lastly is the maintenance building. Again, same materials. This is toward the rear of the building, or rear of the site, very simple roofline. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. The architect can as well. We've also got a short video that might help portray some of those shapes a little better than the 2D versions do. So, and I'll be quiet.
Matt, while we're watching the video, is it, is it going to be possible, you think, in that buffer area to keep any of the existing mature trees in there? to keep any of the existing mature trees in there, or is it?
So we, we're going to try to keep as many as we can toward the rear of the site. I will say that this site kind of drains to a closed depression, so we're having to excavate that fairly significantly, but we have tried to stay off the perimeter. And so maybe we can keep, you know, a 10 or 15-foot natural vegetation area as much as we can.
Okay, good.
The less we tear down, the less we have to replant, so.
Looks nice. Didn't have a logo yet.
So what will be the, like, the hours of operation?
So I think you start running at about 6 to 6.
Okay. So Jim, will y'all keep that little parking area that's on the corner of, well, near Murfreesboro Housing Authority? Oh, it doesn't? Okay. Okay.
Talking about the one downtown here?
Yeah, it's across from the housing, I think it's across from the housing authority. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak or comment on this application. And we will close the public hearing.
Can I ask a quick question? And this may be for Jim, or I don't really know who, but have we had any feedback from the church, or?
We have feedback from church and congregation, all right.
Hey, Jim, Jim, come on up to the microphone, please.
Sorry.
Yes, we actually met with the church and several people in their congregation back in November or so, and we kind of showed them a preliminary plan, but we have met with them and spoke with them.
Okay.
And we'll probably be forwarding them this information, since it's public record now.
Thank you very much, any other questions?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval with any staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much, looks really nice. So next, we are moving on to new business. We have, first item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 262.5 acres located along the west side of Lebanon Pike and including 4.5 acres of Lebanon Pike right-of-way. The city of Murfreesboro, for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer and TDOT, is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, congratulations on your appointment.
Ah, thank you.
You're welcome. I have two items before you, items 6A and 6B, which are related, but they are separate items that we're asking for you to schedule two separate public hearings on. Staff has been asked by the city's administration department to study some areas for annexation, and there's a lot of materials here. And the areas that we're studying for annexation are located along Lebanon Pike or Highway 231, and as I mentioned, are divided into two areas. The first one that I'd like to discuss with you is item 6A, and it is approximately 262 and a half acres. You can see on the map in the area that's candy striped. The existing city limits is in the gray, so you can understand where the city is, and then the proposed area to be annexed. This property, as I mentioned, is just over 262 acres, and it is owned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. You've likely been on the property, because there's a greenway system on most of this property. And then I've heard tell from our staff that it's one of the most impressive systems in Rutherford County. Also included in this annexation study is a portion of right-of-way. Due to the scale of the map, it's somewhat difficult to see, but it's a small green rectangle, and right-of-way to be annexed is being pointed to that. And since it's a state highway, that right-of-way is owned by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. These areas are being studied right now by our various staff members, and I'll prepare a plan of services that can outline the services we have available and when we can have them available. In the meantime, we are working, because the owners are both state and federal government, TDOT, and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, on getting information from them that they don't oppose the annexation. It's our opinion that we do have to have something from those entities saying they're not opposed to it. If we don't get something from them, then this area likely will not be annexed, and that's why we've divided the study area into two. So the next one that I'll talk about, we can move forward with it, even if we don't get the necessary documents for this annexation study. However, as a planning department, we're fairly optimistic in moving forward as if we will get that. And we have confidence in our legal department who's working on that. The property's in the urban growth boundary and is contiguous with the current city limits. As I mentioned, if we're working on a plan of services that can have before you. I know our two council people probably are having a bit of a deja vu, because you've seen these properties and you've already scheduled them for a public hearing. The city council scheduled a public hearing for the matter of the annexation petition and plan of services for August 19th. Is the better option that you have your public hearing prior to that? So what we're asking you to do, planning commission, is to schedule a public hearing on August 4th, and so that you can formulate a recommendation and then send that to city council. It's been indicated to us that time is of essence here, and that our administration department's asked us to move forward as quickly as possible, and that's why some of the stuff is a little out of our typically, typical cycle. Also, state law does require some notifications that are in excess of what our city code requires, 30-day notifications. And because of that, we needed to go ahead and schedule the city council public hearings. Obviously, the decision can be made at the night of the public hearing. So what we're asking you tonight is to schedule a public hearing on the annexation petition and the plan of services for this property on August 4th.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Green?
So this not, may not be an appropriate question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What's the purpose in the annexation? What, what, what is the city gonna, is the city gonna ultimately own this property? And then if so, what are they going to use it for?
We're not going to own this property, it will be owned by the Corps, but the city does have a lease where we maintain, manage some infrastructure on portions of this property. I'm not sure why, our city manager asked us to study it, but we've obviously moved forward with that request.
We already serve it.
Mr. Halliburton, if I may, one of the purposes of annexation is to clarify the responsibility for public safety and for policing and security of the area. Under our lease with the Corps of Engineers, we already have the responsibility to maintain the property and to, to manage the property as if it were city property. Annexation will clarify, again, the response, the public, public safety responsibilities in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We're just scheduling a public hearing, right?
You, schedule it for August 4th, if you don't mind.
I'll move for approval that we schedule it for August 4th.
Second.
Motion in a second, schedule the public hearing for August 4th. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then item B, in conjunction with that, we have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 15.5 acres located along the east side of Lebanon Pike. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant.
Thank you, this is the companion item to what we just discussed. In this annexation study, it equals about 15.5 acres and includes two parcels. Both parcels are owned by the city of Murfreesboro, and they do have the, a trailhead, there's a dam here and a park as well. The property does not include any additional right-of-way, because the right-of-way was included in the previous annexation study. So if the plan of services demonstrates an appropriate level of service and a time to provide those services, and it's approved by planning commission and city council, it is within the city's ability to annex just this property without the contiguous property. If we do annex this property and are unable to annex the item we just discussed, it will be not, it will not be contiguous with current city limits. So it will be in an area surrounded by the county. However, this is property owned by the city, as Mr. Ives discussed. We'd like, I think we're, there are plans to make some improvements to the area, and we'd like to clarify service delivery to the area. And so we're being asked to annex these two parcels that are owned by the city. They are within the urban growth boundary. And similar to the last application, the city council scheduled a public hearing on August 19th, 2021. And so we would ask that you schedule a public hearing on August 4th. That would give you time to formulate a recommendation and send that to city council prior to their public hearing.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to set a public hearing for August 4th in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then our next item is a mandatory referral to consider abandonment, abandonment and relocation of a portion of a 20-foot utility easement at 1825 Old Fort Parkway. Buckle Design Group LLC on behalf of Lowe's is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, commission. This particular mandatory referral is on private property, but it is a 20-foot utility easement along the easterly side of the Lowe's building. They're going to anticipate filing a site plan application for some expansion to their building in this location. So they have been working with our water department, because there is an existing water line in that particular area. And in talking back and forth with the applicant and our water sewer division, there are some potential cleanups to the water and sewer locations versus the locations of the easements that they would like to get satisfied on their side. But what we would recommend is modifying condition number two of the abandonment. But let me list the other conditions, one through four, that we would like to include. Number one, abandonment of the easement shall be recorded simultaneously with or after the dedication of new utility easement. The new condition two would read, the applicant shall field locate all existing water and sewer mains on-site and record new easements for any water and sewer mains that are not located within the existing recorded easements. And the timing of the recordation of these new easements shall be at the discretion of the Water Resources Department. In addition, all existing utility easements shall remain as-is, with the exception of that easement requested for abandonment on the east side of the building. Condition number three, the applicant shall prepare and submit legal descriptions and exhibits necessary for the city legal department to draft any necessary legal instruments. And lastly, the applicant shall be responsible for recording of the legal instrument or instruments. And with that, we do have Kelly is with us with Lowe's, representing the applicant. Should you have any further questions?
Okay.
And no public hearing is necessary for this?
And so we're just voting on this tonight.
That's correct.
So we'll make a recommendation. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Smith or Ms. Kelly with Lowe's?
There are none, I'll make a motion that we approve the mandatory referral, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We don't even have, because we've already done staff reports and other business, so.
I do have a reminder. Our, our meeting next Wednesday will be at 2:30 instead of 1 o'clock.
Okay.
That's easy.
I know you'll remind us, 2:30 next week. Okay, anything, any other reminders or any other business before we adjourn?
These new rules and procedures are already rolling.
All right, thank you, we stand adjourned.